Call this regular meeting of the Southwest looking Board of Education to order. It is five o'clock on Thursday, August 20th. Recognize all of our visitors, both here and online. We are in the Board of Education meeting room. Would you help us please with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Hello, this is an Aetna Elementary Connection Club with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with good reason, justice, and all.
Mr. Jones, will you call the roll please?
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Mrs. Spindler?
Here.
Mr. Vincent?
Here.
Mr. Zani?
Here.
Mrs. Engel?
Here, we have a quorum, we can continue. We need a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
I'll move adoption.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, yes. Yeah. Sorry, I'm derping over here. Uh, I'm Madam President. If we could, I'd like to add to the agenda a discussion topic about allowing the public back into our meetings. Okay, do we have a... Do we need a second for that, Mr. Jones?
You can, or if everybody's okay with that, you just say we're fine with it, because it's a consent agenda.
Is that everybody?
I'm great with it, and where do you want to put it? Or where do you want to put it?
Actually... Why don't we put it at the top for the... Like now? Right after the... Yeah, right at the top. To C? Yeah.
Alright.
Alright, Mr. Jones, will you call the roll please?
Sure. Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That motion passes. Alright, we have items two, A and B.
I'll move adoption of items two, A and B.
I will second that.
Any discussion? Alright, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That passes. Item two, C. We want a... I think we would need a motion to approve, and then we can discuss... Probably a motion to approve the reopening of our board meetings to outside guests, subject to appropriate, uh, social distancing requirements.
And masks.
And masks. Second.
Masks.
Okay, just any discussion?
No.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with it. I think it's a good idea to...
Yep.
And with the social distancing and the requirements, we probably would have to set up some kind of a thing to keep that accurate.
Yeah, I think it probably... It's going to be limited by, obviously, the size of the room. If we think...
Yeah.
If at some point there is an agenda item that we think is going to require something huge, I would assume maybe we'll need to...
Yeah, I think if we do decide to go, I think we need to spell...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we should... Somebody should give us some thought and spell it out, I guess, because...
In a world where all you need is a Wi-Fi connection, you know, you... We could put a bigger TV in the gym and people could sit out there and come in and speak if they wanted to. I don't think we'll get to that, but...
Yeah.
I don't want to exclude people. We have nothing to hide here.
No, absolutely. Yeah, that is true. People could watch outside, and if you wanted to speak at the appropriate time, you could always do that as well, so... Everybody okay with it? Yes?
Can you speak up a little bit?
Oh, yes. Yeah, no, I just said, um, I... I was in agreement with Mr. Vincent that, you know, if at some point we needed to broadcast to the world and they needed to come in and speak at the appropriate time, we would certainly be able to whatever those requirements were, so...
Are we going to continue to allow public participation, or...
Yes.
So that's going to be back when they tend to get to.
Yeah, absolutely. As... As... As long as all the necessary requirements are met.
Good.
Per policy.
And we may have to look at whether or not we're going to use the microphone. I don't know what the requirements are for cleaning the microphone after a speaker.
Yeah, and in between speakers, that could be problematic, correct?
Well, if they didn't... If they didn't touch it and they were using their mask, I think we'd be okay.
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 I definitely need the microphone held, because even with your mics on, they're saying they're having a hard time...
They're having a hard time hearing you.
You're in here with the masks.
And their mics are better, I think, than that one.
Yeah.
People play around a little bit, and then Jim tested how far they'd be back with the microphone.
Okay, okay.
With a mask on, with the mics still picked up. Jim, talk about participation if they come in. Not here by using that mic.
Unfortunately, if they're going to use a microphone like this, they have to talk into it somewhat with this.
Okay, then it would have to be cleaned.
Yeah, there is. Effectively, this is the reason I couldn't have you guys using these microphones anymore. They don't pick up very far away.
Yeah.
Jeff, they're saying the Wi-Fi team's not working. Chuck, is there one probably watching the board meetings? Are you very much... Sorry, I just think it's important that people hear.
Yep, no, absolutely, absolutely. I know there was...
We have 62 people viewing right now.
That's what I was... I believe there was quite a bit of interest earlier, so, which is...
So, where are we miked up now? Just there, and here's...
These three mics have...
Put a mic like that, be set up on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
From what I understand and what I've heard from people, these mics pick up everything, like clicking of pens and...
So we're...
Shuffling of papers.
We're not moving. No. It's delayed.
It's delayed by about 30 seconds.
Okay, okay.
This is what it says now, now you'll see your hand go out there in a few seconds. This is the live feed from the website. It's about a minute or so delayed, doesn't stream anything, huh?
Does it not work on Apple, Chrome, like phones?
It should work on...
It's got three, three tabs.
It has four screen, I tested on Android, I tested on iPads.
Oh, yeah, there went my arm.
There are 64 people currently watching the stream, those numbers are correct. I verified that last meeting in case that need to see that your number started presentation.
Yeah, I don't know why I'm saying that you hear it.
It might be that we're a little on the quiet side, that we're wearing a mask, I could try to turn up the input a little bit. But I have to be careful with that, if I turn it too loud, it'll start clipping. So I'll bring it up. Does anyone say something to this?
Hello?
Something. Say something.
Alright, we're going to go to red, which where it starts to the source, so that helps a little bit.
Okay.
Alright. I apologize if anyone is having trouble. I got the feed unit, so there's a feedback.
Right, okay.
I mostly have trouble with fogging glasses at the moment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can't see Kathy and they can't see Roger, but that's okay. I guess if I scoot up...
I could...
I don't know, I just...
I could maybe shuffle this mic closer to in between. Rick doesn't talk a lot.
So I'm getting some people are saying I can hear fine, others saying I can't hear at all, so I don't know.
Whoopsie baby. Set it there.
I'm afraid to turn the volume a little bit more, because...
Alright.
I can see it go to red.
That might help, but turn it down.
Speak up louder, yeah.
Are they watching from the left side, Jeff? Is that where they're supposed to be?
Yeah.
I don't know.
He's honking the horns.
That's probably, that's a...
Probably no mammoths here.
Has that been going on? The horn honking?
No, it just started.
It sounds like a car alarm, it's so late.
Okay.
So this is...
Okay, well, I'm sure you guys have something you might hear too, if you weren't hearing, so maybe it's just...
Unnormal correlation is not... Exactly.
Okay, so it's my... Alright, I would just continue then.
Okay, alright, so we're good on proceeding with trying to reopen to the public as safely as we can. Okay? Do we need to take a vote on that? Alright, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Alright, that motion passes. Let's continue with three, the financial report. We need a motion to approve the financial report as presented.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Just real quick, about the truth side. Probably the biggest development was the income tax came in, used in July is our largest. And this one came in 24% lower than it used to be. We kind of expected that because the deadline was moved August 15th to July 15th. We still expect to receive the money, but we're expecting a large sum in October of this year.
Okay.
Hopefully makes up for what we didn't receive in July. October will be the big... Should be the bigger pain this year or... Probably better feel for it that time. Everything else is just, you know, as usual.
Alright, Mr. Jones, call the roll please.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes, that passes. Alright, we need a motion to approve items four, A through M, one or all of those.
Motion approval for A through four, M.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Motion passes. Business items. Got policies, first and second reading, and tuition rate. Items five, A through C. Motion to approve one or all of those.
Motion approval of five, A through C.
Second.
Any discussion?
I want to share certain kind of downs, seating and last night fogging up. The, um, these, all the policies on the first reading, except for the facial covering, are all based on the new Title IX regulations that everyone's being trained on. So, just an FYI, that's where those come from.
Tuition rate set by OD, we really don't have a lot to say in it. Just something we can share each year.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. That motion passes. Alright, item six, A. Need a motion to approve a prepayment agreement with Eagles Wings Academy for seven students. Move approval? I'll second that. Any discussion or questions?
It says total savings from... Savings from what?
If you want to pay for it, there's a 20% discount by paying early.
Oh, okay, so that... Or maybe if I read the whole thing. Anyway, good.
Is that because we pay the whole year in advance, Rick? Is that what happens? Okay.
Buy seven seats for a whole year.
Gotcha, okay. Alright, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Alright, that motion passes. Items seven, treasures items, A through C, motion to approve one or all of those.
Motion to approve items seven, A through C.
Second. Alright, Mr. Jones?
Hi, donations, we always appreciate those. Uh, that allows to get this timing issue between activities, a whole bunch of March, which is gone, so... But it's timing issue, the per store came before the, um, invoice came from the per stores, so we have that board approval. And then obviously, state accounts that we do each year, um, for each different activity counts, and so forth. And that's the board, they'll do all three of those.
Any questions for Mr. Jones? Okay, Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zani?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. Motion passes. Alright, item eight, superintendent's items.
Okay.
Come on, that's cute. Oh, yours, sorry.
Okay, so tonight, um, I wanted to share some, some data and some information so we could discuss potentially amending the initial reopening plan that I presented to the board. Go ahead, Jeff. Why am I looking at myself? Maybe? Just kidding. Alright, so the good news, the positive news is that today, um, our county was identified as risk level orange. So that's fantastic, which means that the cases continue to go down in the county. Which would mean on the initial plan I presented to you, um, that we shared with the public, would mean we would bring our kids back to school. But part of the initial intent in tonight's conversation is to discuss if we want to alter that plan further, if we do in fact go back to red. So, um, I, I... My proposal would be to look at the specific data to our actual school district, instead of looking at the entire county with the data. Okay, so, um, what I've shared with you here, um, is taking a look at county, or I'm sorry, school district data, um, relevant to our population. So, Southwest looking, um, school district has 25,049 residents, that includes both adults and school age. So the top graph on the right, um, is broken down by 10,000 cases, per 10,000 cases in the district. And it's a five-week trend that was provided for us by the Lincoln County Health Department that shows you the amount of adult and school age cases compared to the population of 10,000. If you look at the bottom, the bottom graph spells it out in numbers for those that are more, um, like to see it, and we look at that. So the most recent week, August 6th through 13th, you'll see we had 19 total adult cases, which is 7.6 out of 10,000. And we had a total of three school age cases, uh, which is 1.5 out of 10,000. So, when you're looking at this data, this equal... This is less than a tenth of the entire population of Southwest looking schools. So, when we look at five weeks of trend data, and the Health Department will continue to provide this data for our district weekly, now that they have, um, worked on it. So we'll continue to be able to update the board every week, kind of looking at our cases and, uh, where we're currently at. But when you look at the tiny, tiny percent, less than a tenth of our entire population, as well as those three cases, which I will also point out, when you look at three cases, that's not, okay, the week of July 30th, there were two, now there's three, so there's five. That is total amount of cases. So that could be one of the school age children in the July 30th group is still under quarantine. Um, and they could be one of the three cases, August 6th or 13th, or it could be three new. Either way, that is total cases. So it is not cumulative of each week. So, I wanted to have a conversation, um, tonight, based on the next few slides I'm going to share with you. If we want to consider, again, we're currently orange, which would mean kids would come back to school in person. But do we want to consider the re-alignment of our decision when or if, hopefully let's say if, that when we do go back to the red risk level? I, I also would like to share, and I, I know, I believe I talked about this at our last board meeting, but just as a reminder, when I initially made the recommendation to the board to align with the colored risk levels, this was prior to having information from Lincoln County Health Department, who released Thursday, the day after I announced our plan, asking us not to do that, not to align with the colors because of this exact reason. And that being when, you know, the county talks to us about closing schools, and we're look... Looking at less than a tenth of our population or three kids, um, that would not be their recommendation, that it would not be safe for us to return to school based on the present data. Could that change? Absolutely. That would be something we'd have to look at each week as we went along. So, let me kind of move on then, and we can talk about it. So, kind of, you know, the decision-making process to go full remote, you know, again, I want to... I would like to recommend working with the Health Department regarding our specific data to our school district. And then, one other thing I want to point out that the Health Department thinks is very important, is when making decisions to go remote, it wouldn't necessarily be a district decision. Um, we could return to school, and it is quite possible that somebody, you know, or a child will get COVID. In which case, depending on those numbers, if we had to go remote, it doesn't mean the entire district has to be remote. It means we could go remote by building based on cases. We'll be sharing daily absentee data with the Health Department. They'll be monitoring our numbers every day and communicating and working with us. So we will have all of that. It won't be just based on the information I just shared on the previous slide. It would also be based on our absentee data as well. So we'd be looking at two components for individual buildings as well as the district. And all of this would come into consideration, not just when we're in red. I mean, we could technically be in orange and have a high number in a certain building. So, I guess I feel like we should make these decisions now that we have all of this data, which was shared with us, um, over the weekend, so just now in our hands. And now that we have this information, which is more accurate, concrete numbers, I would like to recommend making our decisions for when we do move our in-person learners to remote based on the actual numbers in our district. Do you want to talk about that before I go into calendars?
Yes.
I think maybe we should.
I think we should make the decision on this.
Yes.
Before we talk about what the calendar looks like.
Yes.
Personally, that's what I would like to do.
Yeah.
I think we need a... What we're going to do before we go into calendars.
So that's the day, and I guess we can talk about it. Have a question.
Okay.
I have a couple more slides.
Alright.
I can go first.
Go first.
Okay. So, I have a couple of questions based on things that I've been reading throughout the day, as well as part of what you, um, just presented. So, they may be all over the place, because I've been writing them down as I thought of them, but you may have answered them, so I might have to skip over them once I read it out loud. So, just to clarify for, um, everyone here, as well as everyone that may be watching online, when we look at the total number in all of the ZIP codes in our district, A, I'm just, I'm asking if this is correct. We are looking at all the ZIP codes in our district.
Yes.
For this data.
Yes.
Not just 43062. It takes into account the Granville district, uh, ZIP and the, and the other ZIPs that may fall in, um, district.
Yes, that is correct. And we also didn't include it in this presentation, because we only have 123 students that fall in Fairfield County, which is 2.7% of our population. But I am looking at Fairfield County, and currently we have no cases.
Right.
Um, and the ZIP codes of which are our kids in those reside. So we're looking at anybody in the Southwest looking school district, regardless of their ZIP code.
Great.
Correct.
And then, um, just to also further clarify, when we are making if, when, if and when we move to the, um, this, take this recommendation into account, we will be evaluating the number based on all cases, not just school aged cases, correct?
I think that would be, um, up to us, myself and you as the board, determine which we're going to look at. I think the Health Department obviously is giving us both data points, because I think they think they're both relevant. So I think we'd have to watch them both. I'm not necessarily sure, I think it would depend on the numbers, what we would decide, but I think they're both a piece of the puzzle. I don't think you can make a decision without looking at each of the variables.
I agree. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't just... We haven't made the decision, but we would definitely take into consideration the total number of cases versus just, um, the school aged cases.
I mean, that would be my recommendation, because we obviously, we're school age lives with their parents and family where they live, which could be in part, part of the adult cases.
Exactly.
Yes.
Um, and then, um, just, maybe anyone here could help me with this, but from what I'm studying with this, it seems like that this is real, like you had said, that this was cumulative data of actual cases for the week. And that the state's data, when they present it every week, it's a, um, rolling 14-day. So those numbers may not... That they're only new cases. They're not cases that, um, that could have come from last week. So these are more accurate, in my mind, these would be more accurate reflection of what's truly, um, a real case now.
Yes.
As opposed to the state's data, which is based on only the new cases.
Yeah.
So if a, if a, if a person still had the virus, um, then this week, he was reported last week, he is not included in those numbers for this week.
No.
From the way I understand it.
No, that's not necessarily true.
It's not, okay, we'll scratch that.
Yeah. Those 19, like if we're looking at adult cases from August 6th through 13th, 19, okay? We have 19 in our district. That could be, they could be all 19 new people that were identified that week of having COVID. Or it could be people from the week before.
Right. That, that's how I understand it. What I'm trying to say is that's not how the state's numbers for making the county colors work the same way.
The, the state's numbers are, are like a three-week...
It's like a rolling...
Rolling conglomerate of numbers. That's what the problems... Not the problem. That's what the data points they're using with the state. Or like these two and three-week conglomerate of numbers. These are actually, take a week, who is positive with the COVID?
Yes.
That week in Lincoln County.
So it's like a more real-time
Right this minute, yes.
Reflection of what is going on in our district.
Right this minute, yes.
Good.
It is right this minute, yeah.
Let me see here, skipping down. Okay. So two more for now. Uh, based on all the other Lincoln County schools, are all of them doing something similar to this new, um, metric? Or, um, are any of them doing... Are any of the other Lincoln County schools doing our original, uh, county code, color code plan?
No, I was the only one. I was the first one in the county to present the plan of which one at my risk level, so nobody ever presented that. Um, so there's nobody in the county that is aligned to the colors. There are varying plans in this county as to how they're choosing to go to school, not everybody's plan is exactly like ours. But as far as the determination, they're all using the metrics from the, what I presented tonight.
And that's what I thought, I just kind of wanted to hear it out loud again.
Yes, that's correct.
And then my final question for now, and it was based on what you just presented, when it came to, um, maybe one building, um, gets sent home. So this is kind of a future thinking, and it may not be planned out, but let's say it's, um, the K1 or the two, uh, the two-three building. And that family needs, um, an older middle school or high schooler to be home to help with remote learning uh, because of work or daycare, or whatever that situation. If the middle school or high school is not one of the buildings that are, um, remote, will we make accommodations for that older student to be able to do their work from home to help out with their younger sibling?
I, I think we can, you know, on a...
From an intended perspective and sending them home perspective.
On a tenant's perspective, we have the option this year of the remote and the in-person, so there is flexibility in a child receiving their education. So I think by a case-by-case basis, we would be able to consider things such as that, and helping them to, you know, be remote if they needed to. No different than if a student has to quarantine, they will be offered remote learning, because that would be a huge gap in their education if they have to go off for two weeks.
Okay. And that's all I've got at the moment, so thank you.
I have a few questions. Mine?
I have other slides too.
Okay.
Somebody just missed one.
Okay, wait.
You can ask now, or if you have to go through the whole thing, or... You can ask now, or if you have to go through the whole thing, or?
Are, are they, is it this metric done?
No.
Is it?
No, no, no.
Okay.
It's, uh, overall being.
Yeah, I have some, I have some of those too, but.
Those two.
Yeah, that's what mine is.
I'm focusing on these.
Yeah, if it, if it helps to give you any idea of question space, I also, um, wanted to share with you, um, some potential suggestions of calendar changes. And then, I also have a slide that kinda shares with you, just as a reminder of the current PPE, um, some safety things we're doing in the building, just kind of a, so you know what's going on. So, that's what I have left.
My only question that I had, we're still doing shuttles and everything, correct? With buses?
We are not doing shuttles.
No shuttles.
We are not. Nope. Or took that away to limit the.
Yeah.
The kids.
Nope, answer my question. Yeah, no shuttles. Okay, so, based on this, I am going to put a motion on the table that we go to a, let me rephrase this, that we go to a in-person learning based on specific SWL data from the health department. Can you do that? Can you put the board picture out there?
Oh, the board education review?
Yeah.
So, just take your education out, and I'll enter it. Thank you.
Okay. That's my present, that's my motion. In lieu of using the color-based.
Can I maybe rephrase it a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely.
Or add to it?
Yep. Perhaps.
I would maybe say, um, decisions made on whether or not the district is in-person versus remote.
That's right.
Rather than just saying.
Yes.
In-person.
Yes.
It's based on the county, the school district-specific metrics.
Yes.
As opposed to the, whatever you set up.
Ohio Health Advisory Color-Based.
Color code.
Map. Perfect, thank you.
More like in conjunction with the health department?
Yes, yes, thank you. Alright. Well, yes. We're also taking into. I'll second that. Alright. Discussion?
So, in our buildings then, um, if we are yellow, or we are orange, we're golden. If we are red, then the decision will be based upon what we just dis.
Nope, we won't even look at those things.
We won't even look at that.
Won't even look at any of those things.
There could be, I mean, I doubt it, but I guess we never know. There could be a case where we were orange, and we had a building that had high numbers, and we would need to look at that individual building. Which is why we have to submit every day the absentee data.
Okay. Yeah.
Is it broken down as to what is a high number?
The health department said they will do it that individual basis, they're not putting a baseline data on it. Depends on your population size, your building size, you know, there's multiple variables, they said that will go into. Um, and that's not their decision, Roger, so they're gonna give us the data.
I'm just saying, what, what do you consider a red? Ten cases, or twenty cases, or fifty cases, or?
So, I guess that triggered, that question and John's question triggered an additional question as to if our school district as a whole gets to a, is there a baseline for like all buildings? That we would be like, yeah, no, we're going home.
Chad, the health department, said he will work with each individual district that they are not putting a hard line number on it. So, I, I can't give a number, because if they don't have a number up, I don't wanna make my own number up. But I do think if the health department starts to have a concern, we start to see a rapid increase of numbers, then that's probably a concern for everybody to at least have a conversation. That's what I would say.
And I, I think that it is okay for us to say to the, to Casey, if we are, if we want to do that, and to the health department, we want you to be conservative with.
Yes.
Yeah.
And I think, I believe they.
Number.
I believe they absolutely will be based on our conversations. I don't think they're going to be.
Cavalier. We do not want.
I do not.
We do not want you, uh, the health department to be cavalier with their numbers.
Yeah. That I, I have never had any indication based on all of our conversations. They have been very upfront, and at the forefront of all of this, working hard to get us this data. And I believe they want kids to be in school, but it's safe.
Yes.
For them, as do we.
And staff. We want it to be safe for students and staff to be in the building.
Yes, absolutely.
Alright, any more discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Simon?
Yes.
Alright, please continue, Mrs. Perkins.
Okay, um.
Oh, Dr. Perkins.
Actually, but, Jeff, just hold on before we put my slide up there. Um, I'll put it up in a minute, but I'm gonna share two documents with you first. So, um, in consideration of the fact that we were already orange prior to coming this meeting, um, I have prepared two potential suggested calendar changes. I think it's important that we get kids in school sooner than later, um, for many reasons. So, I'm going to pass these around, and then I'll outline the differences, and then you guys can discuss. There's an option A, and it's titled at the top, option A and option B. There could be an option C, if you don't like option A and B, but I just put two together to talk about. I'll wait till they come all around. Okay, so, there are two proposals that I would make, um, regarding returning to school in person, and based on currently being level orange, and based on what we just changed, is how we would look at bringing, um, our kids back to school. So, option A, um, and if you recall, and I'll refresh your memory, I have said, we would bring people back after Labor Day, based on the fact that we were remote aligned with the color. So, option A, a suggestion one, would be to bring, um, make the first day of school for letters A through K be Monday, the thirty-first. And then, Tuesday, the first, would be L through Z, and then all kids would return to school on Wednesday, September second. Okay? So, a couple of things to understand. With this option, um, we would not start school remote next week. Uh, I can't see having our kids and families start learning one way for a week to turn around and then have our teachers adapt that quickly to bringing them in person, um, and how they teach them, and the families. I also think, um, trying to pass out sixteen hundred Chromebooks and get all those back, it just seems like that would not be maybe a good use of anyone's time or schedule. So, this would be one option. If we went with this option, you'll note at the very bottom, where it says calamity info, our calamity days, if we had to have them, would be remote learning days for students. So, students would be required to do work from home on calamity days, kind of like the old Blizzard Day days. Um, we would have to do that, because we would be out of hours.
So, if we had a two-hour delay, would, the two-hour delay?
We'd be okay with that.
Okay.
If we had a full day off. We have, we have some wiggle room.
Without, without you, maybe, do you want me to wait until you're done?
I don't care.
Without the, um, let's say, we didn't have any calamity days, we were still good with hours, would they?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, calendar, um, option B would be to bring our students back next Thursday, which would be the twenty-seventh. The first day would be, the Thursday would be for letters A through K. Um, that Friday would be for letters A, L through Z, and then Monday, the thirty-first, all kids would return to school. So, it would be the same thing as far as the calamity days. The difference in the two proposals are, I do not believe, because of the previous recommendation, that our families and staff would be ready to receive kids on Monday. I do feel like we would need a few additional days to get ourselves ready. Um, I think that's only in fairness to our teachers. Um, so, both of these proposals, we would have our hours in. Um, they're just two different ones, um, based on consideration. I still want to start with the staggered start of the alphabet, because I believe it's important, uh, that our, um, principals and teachers have time to teach their kids all of the new rules, and, you know, how the hallways will work, and their classrooms, and sanitizing, and all of that good stuff. So, um, I don't, I'm, I'm not connected per se to option A or B. I think both of them get our kids back to school earlier, which I think is what's important. Um, so, I kinda wanted to hear feedback from you.
Okay. So, we have three options, status quo.
Correct.
Or option A, or option B.
Yes, correct.
Um, I'll just throw it out. I like option B the best, because it gets us back sooner. I would also not even be opposed, starting on Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, because I still think that would give three days. Um, in my opinion, option A is too long of a wait. Our color changed, we just had a discussion, we've looked at our numbers. Um, I don't see a reason why we shouldn't start sooner, and that's just where I am.
I, I would like option B, but I, I'm okay with starting on Thursday.
I think option B is Thursday.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm fine with that. I'm just saying, I'd, I'd be okay going even sooner, but I'm fine with Thursday.
Busing is ready to go.
Busing is.
A hundred percent cooks, ready to go.
Yes.
Custodial staff is ready to go.
Yes.
Paraprofessional secretaries, everybody is ready to go.
I believe by, we're pretty ready to go now, but I think people would have a better, people would feel better.
No, no, absolutely.
With a few extra days. By Thursday, though. The busing information will go out Monday. So, regardless, regardless of this, that, or current, the busing's going out Monday.
No, 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 I, I think parents need those few extra days too, because I think you, it, just, parents put, saying, parents, even parents that want to take their kids into the buildings, now to say, you're gonna be in the buildings, they're gonna be like, I didn't buy any supplies yet, I'm so.
I, and that's kind of why I, I personally am, am more on board with option A, with a whole week to allow some of those teachers that, um, may need the time to adjust their classrooms and buy whatever supplies, thinking that they had two weeks to do all of that, when they're focusing on the remote learning and those education plans, as well as parents who may have to pay for a full week of daycare, uh, even if we go back, because some people, oh, you're, sorry, you're contracted, you have to pay. Where they have a whole week.
I didn't think about that, yeah.
They can say, oh, I'm, you know, you pay by the week. I, I mean, that's, that's a really small reason, but, um, I, I just think that, um, maybe the adjustment time may be more needed. Um, I think it's two days that we're talking, so I also have always liked the idea of starting on a Monday. Um, I don't, you know, it's.
Do.
I don't know, that's just my personal opinion, so.
Does option B give us more flexibility with calamity days then? Because it would be starting early?
It does, we gain a little bit of time back, yes.
Okay. I don't know, I just, the people that have had conversations with me, they're ready to go back, minus some of the emails I received today. But, um, I, I don't know, I believe sooner rather than later, I think a teacher at this point, they um, they're ready. I like the idea of kinda doing practice school next week, Thursday, Friday. You learn the routine, you learn what's gonna go on, and then Monday, boom, we're ready, we're ready to go, the thirty-first.
I can get behind that. I like, I also, I do like the idea of practice days being separate people, so I guess, I could see both options. I see very little difference between the two. I'm more concerned about readiness from both the student and the teacher, uh, point of view.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw option C out there.
Correct, option C.
What about half the kids on the, wait, what day? Am I the wrong day of the week? Maybe you did it this way. Is, is the twenty-seventh Thursday?
It is.
Okay, no, I'm on option B then, never mind. You did what I wanted. The twenty-seventh and the twenty-eighth are Thursday, Friday?
Yes.
That's what I, okay, that's what I was thinking.
John threw a Wednesday in there?
You did, that's why.
That's what I figured out.
You did. I'm like, no, Thursday, Friday, that would be right, okay. That's what I'm, you did, yes, that's what I want, Thursday, Friday, and then nothing, and then starting, yeah. No, I think I'm. Yeah.
Well, the teachers have time on those, because they're supposed, they would normally have been teaching remote, so they could utilize those three days completely to ready their classrooms.
Yes, because really, in theory, as of right now, they should be ready to roll on Monday to teach remotely.
Right.
There would be three additional days to get ready.
Actually, four, if you count tomorrow.
Yeah.
I didn't know if there was any planned staff stuff for tomorrow.
Well, this says remote learning on September the twenty-first.
That's, that's a, yeah.
So, what does that mean? I mean, that to me means.
That's a waiver day. That's a waiver day for staff, September twenty-first. Because of the tightness we scheduled this year with the construction projects and time off for the four, five, early release for the high school, we had to change those waiver days. So, staff will be in-person, doing professional development, and students will have assignments that will be given from home.
So, when would, when would remote learning start?
You mean, remote learning for those that chose remote learning?
Yes.
That would start the same day. Here, can, Jeff, can you put my presentation up? Just a hop, let me give you, let me give you this, Roger, because this is.
Well, I mean, it says the twenty-first of September is what mine says.
No, 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 that's just, that's a remote learning day for everybody. Like, that's a.
Oh, for everybody, okay.
Yeah, that's the whole district in lieu of waiver days. So, this is actually the two different proposals and what we would be looking at.
So, that's A and B, right?
Yes.
So, B.
A, A is on your left, and B is on your right. I numbered them, just to keep things confusing. Potato.
One A, two B.
A's on the left, B's on the right.
Oh, there's, I see, start dates for committed remote learners, August twenty-seventh, okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, those other Rs, Roger, those are waiver days we've always had, when kids weren't in, but this year, they'll be learning from now. We're doing work from now.
Right. Now, the, the work from home, would that A through K still be the same, and L through Z? Or, all the remote learners will be on that, the twenty-seventh?
So, the twenty-seventh, anyone that chose remote learning.
Right.
That's when they'll start, with their teacher.
With everybody.
And then, anyone that chose in-person, A through K will come the twenty-seventh, L through Z the twenty-eighth, if, if that option you guys choose, or.
Right.
The other option left.
Yep.
The thirty-first and September first.
Alright, that makes more sense.
Does that make sense? Okay, I'll put that up, sorry, I should put that up.
Well, no, it just says remote learning here, that's why.
So, that's.
Yeah, oh, I see, what you're saying is, on the twenty-first, everyone will be doing remote learning, because that's a staff waiver day.
Correct.
Gotcha.
So, do you have a feeling, Roger, on the A versus the B, or the one versus the two?
Oh, I, I kinda leaning towards B also. I kinda agree with John, that the sooner the better, I mean, if we're gonna do it. Let's do it. My dad always said, when I was growing up, he said, do something, even if it's wrong. Just do something.
I mean, regardless of which one, which I have a feeling will be B.
Why not?
I do have other questions related to this.
Go ahead.
But not related to what we choose, it's just, I'd like to understand the very, very important communication plan.
Yes.
That this will entail, getting the word out.
Okay.
Because there's lots of, we all know it's.
So, at the conclusion of the board meeting tonight, it's already been decided on the, um, the determination for how we'll make plans moving forward, as well as as soon as we decide on the calendar, um, at the conclusion of the board meeting, multiple things will happen. Uh, a robocall will go out from me to the district, letting them know that the new date for the start of school, as well as guiding them to the district website, as well as letting them know there will be an email that will also go out tonight with all of this information. The email is consolidated, it's one nice block of big things that are happening. The presentation will be attached, so that way, they don't have to decipher through all of this to get to the meat and potatoes of when is school starting, with what is going on, here it all is. So, that will be on the website tonight. Um, Tanya also added on our website, a big box, when you log in, you can't get to anything.
Oh, it pops up like soccer.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
No.
So, that is really gonna help move people in the right direction. The email will go out in constant contact, and we will also put the attachments on social media tonight, so.
So, with this presentation that will be attached, will you remove whichever option we did not choose? So that there is no confusion, based, well, which one is it?
It'll still be.
Okay.
It'll still be.
And all of that will go out, uh, all of that will go out before we even exit this room.
Okay. Okay.
Well, you may exit, but we will, we'll get it out, so, correct, so all of that plus the robocall tonight. Um, also, one other change that will be happening is initially tomorrow, there was supposed to be a device pickup day, which we will be canceling, we need to get information out to our remote only learners. There will be a rescheduled date next week, that will also be in the communication, that will be in my robocall as well as um there will be a text message that will go out tomorrow to those families, specifically letting them know it's canceled and will be rescheduled. So we're gonna try to hit them multiple beings of communication, I mean, every platform that we have.
Do we have any families that are remote dedicated and with a separate student that's in person?
Yes.
So I would, just for those people, I would hate for it to get the text that it's been, pickup's been canceled, but they need it for their dedicated.
Well, they'll get, it'll say it's canceled and rescheduled for dedicated learners only, they're gonna get the information in case that is them, everybody's gonna get that.
And then um, I'm sure that you guys, I know it's there, I've seen it, I could find it within three seconds, but um would there be a way to uh link to other areas of the webpage and, and or the Facebook pages where the previous still relevant information has been posted, or the non-relevant page information can get taken down?
The non-relevant is gone, so, yeah, Tanya took care of that.
Cause I'm constantly fishing for things that were communicated, like for example, the parking pass stuff at the high school um was only posted to high school, but yet people are looking for it on here and that, and it's fine, it's just, uh, I, I I am very confident in being able to find it, and I see it all, so it shouldn't be hard for other people, but sometimes it's nice to have those references back, but anyway, that's really not relative to this, but.
Yeah, and we, we, Tanya cleared up all on the website today, all the irrelevant things, that could, could confuse people, previous presentations or other, this is the start date, so hopefully that will be gone, uh, well, it is gone, but hopefully people don't find it in other places that we can't think of or not aware of, um, and then we'll, we'll also have on the link that will go out today, the same question link to submit a question, that has been working really well, we've had, I think, close to almost seven hundred questions that have been submitted to the district that um, you know, have been answered to individuals, so we'll put that on there as well in case there is confusion or questions that they can't find um on what's included in the presentation tonight.
And if, if a parent sees this and based on whatever proposal we picked, they say, nope, gonna go remote, they saw the opportunity.
Yep, and on the thing is a big box that says basically, I don't know what it, I can't call it, but change your mind or wanna go back to remote, that's your. Yep, so that's on there.
So parents can make decisions that they feel is safe for their family.
Exactly.
Absolutely, if they don't, are comfortable and they're not ready, they can change to remote. We just had to um add on another kindergarten teacher because of enrollment, but they will be remote only. Hire a new teacher to go remote uh because of the kindergarten numbers, and we had to um change a fourth grade teacher as well this week and add another remote teacher because of the numbers.
But once you are remote, you are remote until the end of first semester.
Correct, you make that commitment, because we're moving teachers, classrooms, rearranging things, we can't, we can't come back and forth, back and forth, they might not have a place for you.
Right.
Uh, or a teacher at that point, because we moved the teacher to remote to be your teacher.
I, I just wanna reiterate what John said, parents have the responsibility of saying, yes, I think I'm gonna go remote. I believe that I need to keep my child, it's a parent's responsibility to say, I believe it's, my child needs to stay home. As a Board of Education, we're not up here stomping saying you must regardless of what you feel, you have, parents have that responsibility.
Yes.
It's also their responsibility, if their child is attending in person, to assess their health every single day before sending them to school.
Correct.
And to keep them calm if there's even a schmidge of a symptom, of anything.
Correct, because that's the only way that this is gonna work, is if we can all keep each other safe and healthy.
So I have one more slide.
Absolutely. Oh, wait, we didn't, we need, we need to choose a proposal one A or two B?
Yeah, one, one A or two B, what do you guys think?
I'll just throw it out, I move that we go with option B, and we start on August twenty seventh, in person for A through K. We start August twenty eighth, in person for L through Z, and then on the thirty first, all students are attending in person, and on August twenty seventh, all committed remote learners will begin.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Wait a minute, I, you said the twenty seventh, all committed?
I just read proposal two.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I was, I was reading A and thinking I was, yes, I'm sorry.
Me, that's the one you like, Roger.
Never mind. I was looking at the other one and, that's why.
I know, we haven't had a second, but I have one last question.
Okay, let's get, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and discussion?
Just a quick, uh, I, I think you already said it, but I'm gonna, there will be a device pickup for dedicated remote learners.
Yes, it's actually.
Prior to the twenty seventh.
Tuesday, three to six. Yeah, we're gonna, it'll be next Tuesday, and that, that's going to be announced tonight.
Okay.
So it's not a secret, so yes, next Tuesday, three to six, will be a device pickup at the high school for dedicated remote learners.
Thank you.
And we've already passed out, how many? Three hundred and twenty, I think.
I'm thinking back closer to almost four hundred.
Of our remote learners so far, so, we put a big debt last week.
Great, thanks.
I do have some ancillary questions, but they don't pertain to this vote in particular, so we can wait till after.
Do this first, and I can maybe show you my last slide?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'll answer.
I answer some of them.
All right, Mr. Jones.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zarni?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Speller?
Yes.
Mrs. Anker?
Yes. All right, that motion passes.
Okay, so I did have one more slide, I just thought, I just kinda wanted to keep everybody in the loop and then I wanted to address something too, so this is kind of, this is currently what we have in the building, um as far as PPE and safety measures are concerned. So available PPE, um we have X guards, which are like dividers for the small groups in our younger classrooms, so they can work in their literacy circles of a small group of kids, or they could use them for one-on-one if they wanted. Um, we did ask teachers who were not getting X guards, um in all, in the entire district, if they wanted a sneeze guard, which is kinda like a Lexi glass that will stand in front of you, so if you want to work one-on-one. So any staff member that wanted one of those, those have been ordered. Um, obviously, we have an abundance, a face mask on hand for not only staff, but for students as well, that either come without them, or, you know, forget it, or whatever happens. And then shields for those, that's applicable in situations that with the new governor's order, they're allowed to wear them, which we obviously know is different than before. Um, gloves, we ordered gloves, they're, they're in, I can say we ordered, we have gloves in the building, um as well as gowns, which those will be used in situations such as the isolation room, some of our um, some of our um, you know, smaller classrooms where special needs kids are at, some of that instances will be used for the gown, so that's not something that will be used in every classroom either. Um, cleaning supplies, the hand sanitizer stations um were delivered and are starting to be installed this week. Um, they might even be done by tomorrow, those are all over um our buildings in a variety of places. Um, we have disinfectant spray, and I did want to um address this for a moment because this seems to be a hot topic among our staff. So the disinfectant spray that we have, um if you, if you read the, you know, the actual bottle or and or if you read the sheet that comes with it, it's going to tell you that it's harmful to kids. However, that is as is, the bottle is diluted, it's a sixty-four part um with water, and it's a solution that's created, put in, um actually, Mrs. Moore has one of the bottles in front of her that's been um diluted. That actual chemical is safe, I mean, obviously, nobody should ingest it, no different than you should ingest a lot of your own products that you use in your house, but it doesn't mean that it's harmful to, to kids, it's been approved, we're allowed to use it in schools, we're allowed to spray with it. Now, the one negative, there is a small negative, and there's no, we've not been able to find something that's, would make this a positive. Initially, we were told by the company, or Kevin Passkins was told by the company, three to five minutes, it would dry. We're finding now that surface time depends on multiple variables, the humidity, the temperature of the room. So in some instances, it is taking longer to dry, which leads to one or two things. Then you can wipe it off, which still, the germs are killed after that time period, three minutes, and or you can let it dry, but sometimes it is taking longer depending. So we talked about that today, Rick and I had a meeting with supervisors, um, you know, we're gonna reach out to staff to see if, you know, fans are needed in any of the rooms, help with circulation, you know, I would encourage that in building principals to try it out. Try it out in your areas, how long is it taking, because it is varying depending on the place it's at. So in the elementaries, they're not changing classes, so this is gonna be a bigger issue at the secondary level, so we need everybody to kinda figure that out and check out your situation, your environment, because as you know, all the buildings, all the rooms, temperatures are different, environment's different, airflow is different, so um fans will be one option that are approved by the health department for airflow that Rick did say he would purchase for those needing them, that might help the situation with the spread.
And if I might. Richard Jones will be purchasing fans. That's such a good donation, Rick.
There you go. And if I may just chime in, I sprayed the, the cleaner on my arm at the beginning of the meeting, and so we went on over an hour. I don't feel anything on my arm, I also use it to clean my glasses. And I actually think, just FYI for those people that wear glasses, I think it helps with the foggy.
Really?
Yes.
Can I have some?
Down the line.
But I, I don't have any, any, it didn't affect on my arm, I spread it on my underarm, so it's a softer skin.
That's a huge uh.
No burning, my eyes are fine.
No, we don't wanna encourage children, so.
No, 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 no. No, we don't, I, I wanted to test it out.
Is, is that the, the stuff you're diluting down?
That's what I.
Okay, cause that's a different label than what's on.
No, that's the, that's the first, that's the lemon, what's it called, lemon?
Oh, lemon force. I mean, I don't wanna do it too. I did on my, my underside, lemon force.
Completely different than that.
I, I've used these to test alcohol with, so there's a little bit of rubbing alcohol on it, it should be okay, longer.
I think it's adding, maybe it's just me.
You have hit the right.
Is it called lemon force, is that what it is?
This is the front label, Roger, and then there's also the back that you have, that has all the literature looking at, so it's a two-part, yeah.
Okay. And this is the stuff that just dries, right?
It does dry, but like, that's one thing, it depends on your environment, but yes, it does dry, it will dry. Like the bus drivers, they've already tried it out, no problem at all, but they also have a ton of windows, and so it's drying very quickly in that environment, so it's going to depend on your environment.
Pretty exciting, it's worth for fog.
Maybe, maybe it was just me.
They aren't fogging as much, we'll see that.
Um.
We do the real test here.
Okay, and then I also wanna say the classroom hand sanitizers, so everybody has a big jug in their classroom as well, those are gonna be all over the building too, but everybody will have their own. The hand sanitizing stations, where you just put your hand under, it comes out, those are periodically throughout the building, but the sanitizer will be in each classroom. And then in addition, um, and these, each of the buildings have shared their plans, and I believe they put them out too in email communication with their families, but in, in the secondary level where there are larger, you know, obviously more kids, there's gonna be staggered release times, um they're gonna have specific doors in and out, hallways will be one-way. Um, at, at the middle school, they're gonna do transitions by grade level, so it's, there will be significantly less kids in the hallway um based on their current plans, moving in the same direction, heading through similar entryways, etc., etc. Um, and then at the elementary, we're gonna have minimal transitions because they're in the same class and there are the same two teachers, etc. So all of that is already pre-planned, all of their, you know, the recess time, each teacher has their two slots, they're designated areas, they're allowed to take their kids, so the um administrative team in the buildings have done a really great job putting all of these in place to make sure that we're ready to roll, I think they've done a really good job.
So will be social distancing at dismissal as well, like the task where all the kids used to stand outside in a line? There would be some.
Yes.
Modifications to that.
Yes, yes.
And that, well, that, that.
And we've eliminated the shuttle buses at the elementary, so that's going to help as well.
Okay.
Okay, so that's the end of my presentation, I don't know, can take it down, Jeff, you don't mind, I don't know if you have other questions about that or just things you wanna talk about in general.
You covered one of them, I had three. Um, second one was the um three feet distance, correct? And we got that recommendation from whom again?
That came from the health department.
The Licking County Health Department?
Yes.
All right.
Now, I will tell you, in a lot of instances, we are, we'll be out next week in the building checking out classrooms, we gave the principals this last week to do that, but we have been looking at um numbers in classes, um we have not had a chance, the middle school is still finalizing their schedule, but we were able to look at the high school the last two days, I mean, the high school numbers for their classes on average are as low as the elementaries. So they've been removing more items, so I do believe in many cases, they will be further than three feet apart, that is the minimum. And that would be in some of the larger classes that may be out there.
Right, and then finally, um, this food for kids, if you've chosen remote learning, there is a way for you to get food if you qualify for free and reduced lunch, correct?
Yes, and Cindy is gonna work with Tanya on the communication piece for that, but she already has a plan for pickup. Once a week, we'll be communicating, it will look different than the spring, because people that, you can still get food if you're not free and reduced and you're remote, but you have to pay, last spring, the government allowed everybody to participate, it won't be like that. So um, Tanya will be working with Cindy to make sure all of that information gets out to our remote learning families, so they know where to pick up, how it's gonna work, all that kind of.
And likewise, if you were to have to go remote all district, you would have a way to still feed those children?
Absolutely, yep.
Have we tested out, um, is there enough time when, when kids are changing class in the, in middle and high? Is there enough time for teachers to clean?
There is enough time, if it doesn't dry, they'll have to be wiped down, there is the three minutes of passing, so it's gonna depend on the drying, which is why they need to figure out in their individual classroom what's gonna work, based on their environment.
Is there going to be, and, oh, Deborah, you done, is that?
No, I'm good.
Mind piggyback on that question. Um, so while the teachers, you know, the bell rings, the students leave the room to go to their next class, the teacher is spraying down desks and other shared materials, or like textbooks or whatever. Will there be other staff members that can take on the role of monitoring the hallways while those teachers are doing that?
Yes, people, they're the, I believe the buildings, especially at the secondary level, they've done a good job of working on who can be extra eyes and helping in the hallways, there's gonna have to be a lot of presence to keep kids moving in the right direction and to make sure you're following your rules with a mask.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, cause it seemed like there was some concern about having to do this and this.
Yeah, they can't be in two places at once, so obvi- obviously.
With the, with the six-minute time, whatever the time changes between classes.
I've got a question, if we get a report back from the health department that's not good, uh, would it take a special board meeting to?
No.
You would make that decision?
No, not, I would come to you, I would probably send you an email telling you that would be my recommendation and bear in mind, you know, we just, no different than if you turned red and we switched to remote, we didn't have to vote on that per se.
Okay.
I think, I have, I think, just a statement, not, it's not necessarily a question, but I think that we're gonna, everyone is gonna have to take a lot of personal responsibility. You know, i- if you're at the refrigerator door in the teacher's lounge and you wanna make sure that it's wiped down, then wipe it down yourself, if you're in the, you know, a bathroom and you wanna make sure that it's wiped off, wipe it down, don't wait for the custodian to get there and, and then complain about it not being wiped down. I understand that that's not necessarily your job, but lots of people are doing lots of things that aren't their job right now. And lots of people worked a lot this summer on things that weren't their job, so I'm just, everybody is gonna have to do a little extra step and the extra mile to make sure the kids are getting taken care of, because there was a lot of time this past spring where a lot of kids didn't get taken care of, and we're gonna, I'm a, we're gonna see a long-term the mental health of our kids, we have no idea what we've done, so just take a step back and think about what you're doing and take care of each other, so that's my statement for tonight.
I have a couple more things, of course, right? I promise it won't be long. Um, have our staff members been instructed on proper use and when and timing of hand sanitizers and proper wearing of masks and keeping themselves, you know, um, will they also receive the instruction on what to instruct their students to do and how to instruct them as well?
I, I'm, I'm not sure all of that was covered in the staff meetings, but we can definitely touch base tomorrow and find out. Um, Kevin did put together a cleaning thing um this week for us to put out to our staff and chair, so um, maybe Tim and Tanya can work tomorrow with the building principals to make sure we have some alignment with an understanding, I, I do think the staff should know about how to wear their mask, but we can definitely reiterate that um as well as the expectation for kids and the cleaning supplies and sanitizers, we can, we can do something, put together a uh consistent communication piece, so everybody's on the same page.
Do we use public school works?
We do use public school works, yes.
Do they have some videos whatnot then?
Good question, we can ask Mindy about that.
I'm pretty sure that they do.
Rick, can you ask Mindy about that? Thank you.
And then my last question on this topic is, what is our current dedicated versus in-person learning percentage?
Yes.
I can look up a, 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 a bus, you go, I can, I can.
Um, it's dedicated, um, remote is, we're seventy-three percent wanting to come back, that is where we're at right now.
Seventy-three percent for the mic, thank you.
I was gonna say, it's gonna probably be here, so yeah, that's good, thank you.
Seventy-three in person, so that's gone down since even last week.
Yeah, we've lost that to change, switching to remote.
Okay, great, thank you.
With the additional mandate of key one masks?
I believe the key one had a lot to do with it, yes.
Oh, I also forgot, I did have one more, can you reiterate again the, uh, what you sent out of regarding face shields?
So, yeah, so face shields are not allowed to be, it's not allowed to be your number one um covering um in the district. So it can be used in environments where you need to see. covering, um, in the district. So it can be used in environments where you need to see someone's mouth. So that may be, um, in situations with our EL students, um, hearing impaired. Um, it could be actually banned, um, foreign language when doing things that would involve, you know, speaking, um.
It, it can be your number one thing in those situations.
In those situations, it can absolutely for both the staff and kids.
In, in lieu of a mask, in, in those, for those
Yes.
just during those times?
Yes, during those times.
Okay.
Um, we have a staff member who's hearing impaired. Their students will be able to wear masks so that
Or just a facial.
So they're able to see their lips as well.
Okay.
Um, are there any other situations you guys can think of or missing?
Like, like if, uh, a first grade teacher is working on phonics?
Yes, phonics.
I assume the choral department?
Yeah, the choral department, any of that like singing. We had, uh, purchased, purchased them for all of the choir students initially. I don't know what they're doing music wise. I heard some singing, maybe not singing, so I'm not sure what they've chosen, but yes, anything where you need to see your mouth, they may be used. And then there's also those that, um, Dan Davis is heading it up, but we do have a, um, an exemption, um, that parents can choose to apply for with the proper, uh, medical documentation or, and not just kids, staff as well. Yes.
Thank you.
I have a general question. Let's take, for example, the high school football team. Are they tested?
No.
Okay, so how do you know that someone has the virus?
Well, when they would start to, someone started to have, showed symptoms and then, you know, they went and they got tested.
Well, then they would get tested? I mean, I'm just wondering, do we have, do we have a nurse that tests these kids or they have to go get their own test?
They have to, but the.
I just, well, I'm curious.
If kids have, um, symptoms, etc., they're gonna be sent home.
Well, I understand that, but but they would go get, they would have to go get tested. We don't have.
They have to come back symptoms.
We don't have a facility to test.
Correct. We will not be testing this.
I'm just curious, yeah, okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. So that's all I have on the updated items.
Oh, that's awesome.
Okay, you did at the mouth. You did. Oh, so they can throw it. Oh, that's good. Good.
So I can see when you're frowning at me?
That's right. That's right. You can tell I'm smiling right now.
So that's all I have.
Any other questions?
I move adjournment.
Oh, well, I, are we there yet?
I'm sorry.
I just wanted.
I'm sorry, I thought we were ready.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I take the motion back.
Off the table, off the table.
I just wanted to thank the parents that came for the peaceful protest.
Absolutely.
And showed up, dedicated their time
Absolutely.
to show what their commitment was.
And time to make artwork and signs and.
Yes, absolutely. We really appreciate that.
Phenomenal that they showed up.
Absolutely.
We appreciate their support, their continued support.
Absolutely.
And the teachers have sent in letters and their opinions that good to read.
All right, go Roger. Yeah, now you're ready.
I move we adjourn.
I'll suck at that.
Any discussion? Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Speller?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes. We are adjourned at six fourteen PM.